At this time, we'll call the public hearing to order. It's a public hearing this evening for the proposed FY15 school district budget to take place at Wyre Village School Auditorium. The citizens of both Spencer and East Brookfield have been duly informed. We will start with a presentation after the Pledge of Allegiance by the administration, and then we will open it up to comments from the public.
I'm sorry, did you answer?
No, just... Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) United States, America. The republic overstands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, the members will take the front seats.
Okay.
Dr. Malvi, will you make your presentation?
Okay. Good evening. Both Julie and I, Julie Suprenat, business manager, and myself are going to do a little bit of a tag team up here this evening. And I just want to open the session with some brief remarks with respect to what you're about to see. As you know, for a number of nights, the school committee has received the presentations from school administrators and program directors, and both Julie and myself commenting along the way. The committee also had some deliberations and questions at the most recent meeting with respect to possibilities of putting some items into the budget and seeing if we were able to live within what the dollar amount was, the $24,096, I rounded to $24,100. And then there were some other possibilities that they also asked us to consider, at least take a look-see, and we are attempting to address that this evening. So we're still holding to the original figure that was put out there of $24,096,795. And as we go through it, Julie's going to handle the slide-by-slide presentation with respect to a summary. That is what the major cost areas are in the budget, and some of the impacts that we see coming down the line with respect to reduced revenue and school choice, and some of the grants that impact us on the operational side of the budget. And that's our best guesstimate, if you will, at this point in time. We certainly are hopeful that that picture can change as time goes on between now and the actual start of the new fiscal year, July 1, 2014. But we have to be conservative with what we look at in terms of trend data for the past several years, and Julie has done the best that she could to try to anticipate the reductions in the grants and how that will impact on our budget. Along with that, we also re-included, if you will, the sections from the respective major locations under requests. And we made it clear on the nights of the presentations that the requests sections with the dollar amount were not actually built into the budget. We simply wanted to present that so that the school committee and the public would be aware that there are still items there that we think are important to be in the budget, but we wanted to keep it to a reasonable increase, which now looks like it's about $645,000, potential increase. So we put the requests in, but based on the deliberations of the school committee, they selected some of those items to see if they could be built into the budget. So we're prepared to deal with that. Last but not least, there's a section in the budget toward the end that shows what the offsets would be, and it's around $120,000, if you will, if we were to add certain items in and live within the $24,000, $24,001 overall budget. If we were to add in those items taken off the request section, approximately $120,000 and some change, we would make an offset in the budget so that we wouldn't go much higher. It certainly is within the committee's purview that they can adjust that any which way, and I think if we took the action of the committee correctly from the previous meeting was that they didn't officially vote to do it one way or another, they simply asked that we would prepare the budget and come back, and that's the purpose of it this evening. At the very end, we also do another summary piece, if you will. And then I'd like to take a moment after both myself and Julie finish, and I think there are a couple of questions with respect to the athletic director position and assistant athletic director position up at the high school slash junior high school, because there are responsibilities there as well. And then I think there was a question relative to substitutes, how we budget for that, and some of the differentiation you may see within the respective schools. So we'll try to respond to that as well. Over and above that, if there are questions, certainly jot them down. I think this is a evening for not only the school committee, because ultimately you folks will be making a decision to adopt or amend the budget, and depending on the time parameters, whether we're able to entertain any questions or input from the audience. Okay. Thank you. Julie?
All right. We'll start by looking at the statistical budgets. You can see that we are a little bit higher for the FY15 level services budget over the FY14 budget. Just to take a quick look back at how we got to where we are right now with the FY14 budget and what we had to cut to get here, the director of teaching and learning, the facilities manager, the dean of students at Wyre Village, seven elementary teachers, five junior high school teachers, four high school teachers, a preschool teacher, one and a half special ed teachers, a psychologist, elementary band, the guidance secretary. We closed Maple Street, saving us $309,000, which included eliminating a nurse and a secretary. We've got $124,000 of supplies and services across the district, and $35,000 of computer supplies. So we take a look at the level services budget. You're going to say, well, why is it higher than this if it's level services? These are the items that are impacting our budget negatively. The first would be the loss of school choice and grant revenue, which I'll go into more detail, but every year you do lose some grant revenue. You just have to anticipate it because the grants aren't announced until sometime after school ends in the fall, starts in the fall. And then we've been continuing to see a loss of school choice. Health insurance increases. This is still our worst-case scenario. We're still working with our brokers to get final numbers, but right now, we're seeing $207,000 increase, which is actually better than what we presented last week. We've gotten some new numbers back, but they are still working on those. Employees that were hired after the start of the school year, we had at least five or six employees that started somewhere during the start of the year, and then when the budget was cut in December, we then took the savings from not having those employees for the full year. We now need to build their full salaries back into the budget. We're looking at about $27,000 of increase for next year for building heat, $55,000 for special ed transportation, and $31,000 for regular ed transportation. Here's just a quick look at the reductions that we're anticipating for the grants and school choice. You can see, first FY13 versus 14, we anticipated about 13 percent. To be conservative for FY15, we're anticipating about 16 percent. We do have other grants. These are the grants that actually pay for critical staff that we could not eliminate even if the grant goes away. So we're looking at about $200,000 between the school choice, preschool revenue, and the grants that we would anticipate that we will probably be reduced next year. Here's just a look at the budget summary of the level services budget. You can see it's up $645,000. That's about 2.75 percent. And most of the changes can be explained from the slide before for a loss of grants and the benefits. Taking a quick look at the requests of the schools, what they asked for at East Brookfield, they had asked for two paraprofessionals, more workbooks, library supplies, teacher supplies, and there's a need for a computer update of the HVAC system there. At Lake Street, they asked for additional clerical time, money for workbooks, library books and supplies, and $10,000 for handicap accessible updates. Wyre Village, they're looking to reinstate an assistant principal, additional clerical time, more money for workbooks and teacher supplies. Knox Trail also looking for clerical time, looking to add team leaders, more money for workbooks and library supplies, and to bring back the conflict mediation program to the district. And at the high school, they're also looking for summer clerical time, the virtual high school program being further implemented, additional money for library books and supplies, athletic expenses, and there is a couple capital projects there, new exterior doors and patching of the leaky roof. For the people's services department, they're requesting an additional sped teacher at Wyre Village, two additional programs which would need, well, it's actually one additional program, at the high school and junior high, which would need, and a school adjustment counselor, a teacher, a special ed teacher at the high school in Knox Trail, and a paraprofessional at the high school in Knox Trail. And then, as we went into last week, the technology needs, there's technology projects of $150,000, new computer hardware, $332,000, and replacement of servers and switches of $150,000, mostly due to the XP going away issue. So what we took from the meeting last, that these were the things that, of the needs that we prioritized, that we were going to put back in the budget, and then how we would pay for them to keep the budget the same as what we showed last week. It would be the assistant principal at Wyre Village, workbooks for East Brookfield, Lake Street, Wyre Village, and Knox Trail, library books and supplies for East Brookfield, Lake Street, Knox Trail, and the high school, the virtual high school program at the high school, the Knox Trail team leaders, and the conflict mediation program. The savings that we, or reductions that we would anticipate to cover those would be the reduction, the reduced cost of transportation, which we had discussed before, that we're anticipating $20,000 savings in transportation off of what we originally presented. The health insurance, based on the current negotiations, $45,000 is what we're thinking. It would be less than what we presented before, and then eliminating the third grade teacher at East Brookfield. So those savings would then cover the additions that we're recommending. And then just a summary of what the level services budget looks like. Again, $645,000 up, or 2.75 percent. That would equate to a total increase in East Brookfield's assessment of $86,000 or 4.5 percent, and a total increase of Spencer's assessment of $493,000 or 6.48 percent.
Thanks, Julie. Just a couple qualifiers on it, that as we said from the initial start of the budget presentations, this is a level service budget, and simply that means that we're rolling over, we're moving forward as we currently exist. Some items obviously have to change, and that's been reflected in the budget. And then there are impacts that really are causing the overall increase. There are no real new positions, no real new initiatives, other than the listing there of items moved from the requests section to possibilities to be moved into the budget. And as I said early on, you can literally just change the number from FY14 to FY15 with some of these explanations, and what you see now is what you will see as we go forward. The other piece to this is, we know that as you go forward, as any school district at this point in time, it's really on preliminary information that comes out from the state with respect to revenues, with respect to what the legislature is going to do, and where the governor may weigh in on the budget proposals and presentations and discussions as time go on. Certainly with a lot of the things that we do, we base them on assumptions. Either the numbers are going to hold fairly consistent, or they're going to increase within a certain range. But we never really know until those numbers are firmed up at other levels beyond our control. And certainly as we go forward, as every school district, we try to do our best and read into what the future may hold, but we certainly cannot control it. And when we're thrown a curveball, we have to adjust. And it's no surprise that we've had to adjust a couple times this year here already, most recently with an adjustment that was made in the school choice and charter revenue where we took an additional hit of $169,000. Now, we don't have an account to go through to, to go to, to transfer that $169,000, so we had to come up with an additional list of reductions, which the committee has approved. Ultimately, as we go forward, even if the budget is tentatively adopted and approved, we will be in communication with the commissioner of education's office because of their continued involvement as long as we paying back the bond note that we had to this current fiscal year. And as we go forward, I will tell you that we're prepared administratively to at least look at the adjustments that may or may not have to be made. Certainly, if they have to be made, our first look-see will be, can we realign money within the budget? There is no hidden place here within the budget that we have a well or a reservoir of money to say, well, we'll simply take $10,000 or $15,000 or $20,000 out of here. To the contrary, something to the tune of $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 somewhere else would be eliminated in order to cover increases. That's one option. The other, excuse me, the other option is if we're able to increase on the grant side and recover some of the money that we're anticipating would be taken away. We still will be active in what's called competitive grants. Certainly, the administrators that I work with, as well as teachers in the buildings, very quick to point out if there's an opportunity for us to apply for money, and I would expect that to continue. Unfortunately, I don't see anything on the horizon just yet that we're, you know, kind of licking our chops on, but we'll be watching very, very carefully. I can pretty much assure you that our involvement with the DSAC group, the District and School Assistance Center, has been very positive and will continue to be positive. I forget if we announced at the last meeting, maybe Karen did, but most recently, we have received final approval on two new grants that we had sent forward, and I think it was in the range of $11,500. May seem small, but that's $11,500 that we don't have in our pockets to do the kinds of things that we need to do. I think that we've built a positive relationship with the DSAC folks, and I know we're getting their attention to come out here. We've had some recent activities that I'll wait to the main meeting to comment on, but I think the future looks pretty good with them. Not that they have a cart full of money, but at least they're listening to us, they're supportive of our efforts. I believe that they know that we're serious about making the necessary improvements, so I think that relationship will flourish as we go forward. And I think the last thing that I want to mention and wrap up on this there, that from the list that you saw, with respect to the potential bring-back items from the request areas, as I said at the last meeting, it pains me as a school superintendent for the number of years that I've been involved in this industry to have to make a recommendation where we would eliminate an additional, whether it's a classroom teacher or a professional position. But that was the only way I could see that we could go forward, to try to recover enough money to at least have the conversation, if you will. But unfortunately, it affects a classroom position at the East Brookfield Elementary School. And as much as it pains me to do that, I think the final determining factor for me was that we will do our best to get by. And as you know from the data that was presented, we already have three classes, you know, with one teacher, if you will, there. Mr. Tomlin certainly has made a very, very strong case, and I have talked to Mr. Tomlin this week. He's not going to back off of that, and I applaud him. I wouldn't expect him to do that as a principal advocating for his building. But at the end, if there's only opportunities for us to create money in order to look at some of those areas, I had to make a tough call on it. And last but not least, and help me, Julie, if I'm slipping up on something, but with respect to the issue of the athletic director and assistant athletic director position, I thoroughly reviewed that with Mr. O'Brien, the principal, and Mr. Fahy, the athletic director. If you're interested in the information, we do have some copies of the respective job descriptions, and Bob has some numbers, too, really talking points, if you will, that if you are interested in that, we can have Bob come up and speak to that as well. But it's my recommendation, because you saw it not included on the list, it's my recommendation to leave that intact for the small amount of money on the assistant A.D. position. I think it was $4,700. I'm not in a position right now, and I hope, I hope we don't get to that point further on down the line, that we have to start to pull off $1,000 here and a couple thousand dollars there. If that be the case, then, then everything is free game again. And even areas that we have not hit afore, brought forward to the committee for consideration, may have to be looked at down the road. You've heard the term necessity is the mother of invention, and that could happen as we go down. So with that, Julie, did I miss anything? Okay.
At this point, the way that we will proceed is, I'll give an opportunity to any of the board members, if you have any questions or comments that you want to make in regards to this, and then I'll open up to the public. And then if you want a second bite at it when we get to the regular meeting, there's another line, another item on the agenda there to accept the budget, and we can certainly open it up again at that time if you hear other information from the public as they come forward. So if there's any committee members that would like to make any statements or comments about what Dr. Malvi just presented, and if not, then I'll open it up to the public, and you can reserve the right when we get into the regular meeting to make any motions, changes, or suggestions. Hearing nothing from any of the board members, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone that would like to come forward with any questions in regards to what has been presented? Seeing nobody?
I'll come up.
If you would just state your name and residence, please, for the record.
Kyle Sullivan, 17 Greenville Street. You know, us parents, we're not sure exactly how much things cost in terms of sets of materials, for example. There's two areas of concern in the budget. One is around materials, especially when I, when I look at what my, I have four children currently in the school system. Look at the materials that they bring home, hardcover books, workbooks. And there's two, there's two types of situations I've seen. One, the materials are very old. Back before I left, I was just looking at a U.S. history book that was at least a decade old, so it stopped at 2004. So I'm not sure if the, in the class, they ever get that far, but I was surprised to see that that wasn't updated. And then there was an anatomy book my daughter Olivia had out of the high school that was at least 15 years old. I was just really surprised. Now, I'm not sure what changes over time in anatomy, but I was concerned to see something so beat up and, and old. So I guess what I'm getting to is I'm questioning whether the school committee has reviewed the actual handheld materials. Now, of course, there's the technology side of things, and I'm a technology guy, so I understand that that's really important. At the same time, that is not maybe the primary mechanism at this time for teaching our kids. What I want to understand is whether the, the books and the other materials, whether the school committee believes it suffice. So that's question one. And question two had to do with, was more of a technology question, and this had to do, has to do with the A.V. budget. And I see that, that the A.V. role in the schools is sort of a part-time role, it looks like, from somebody that's declared an A.V. specialist in the school. And I'm concerned that that's just not enough. And if we're supposed to be leveraging tools that we have, technologies that we have, that that's not prop, it's been my experience in looking at the various schools, that that's not properly applied. So no discredit to those that are part-time doing that work, but I understand that there's also a stipend behind or some sort of additional income involved there. So I'd like to see a renewed focus on technology as well. And I won't even get into the website. That thing's not even updated, and I'm not sure how that, how much that costs, but it looks like you guys maintain the front page, and that's about it. So I'm expecting more as a parent there as well. And these are kind of, you know, at least this website, for example, is a nitpicky thing, but the school materials is really primarily where I'm curious on where, where the school committee's landing with evaluating any sort of recommendations around that. Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Malvi, would you get, address those?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, is it? Thank you. With respect to the, the books and materials, we, we don't have a lot of new money, if you will, in that arena across the district, from elementary schools to the junior high school to the high school. We have some money in there, but my understanding is that certainly for this year here and going into next year, I can't speak to the previous years, most recently, but that's a real critical area that we need to do more in. Unfortunately, as we looked at what our end line would be on the budget, we weren't able to build in sufficient amounts. So, so I would be the first one to say that we're kind of limping along with that, and it would take a substantial infusion of money to really get us up to the level of many, many other districts, but we certainly would like to do it, but we just don't have the resources to do it right now. Typically, typically when that happens, and I would expect that this district will eventually have to face it, it's done on a priority basis and as a phase-in, because you could go to, for example, you mentioned some of the books there, you could go to a new series of books, and you could be looking at $10,000, $15,000, you know, just off the top. And then depending on, particularly at the high school level, where you have multiple courses and the need for multiple texts and resource material, supplementary material, et cetera, it can get quite costly. The junior high and the elementary level, they're certainly not without having need because they do, but it has come to our realization that we're just not able to take additional money and pump it into those areas. And I apologize for that. There's, in most school districts, without breaking the bank, there is this phase-in, as I say, and that can be spelled out over several years, but we just don't have the resources to do that right now. I would expect that as we conclude a lot of the work with the DSAC, and I don't know how you or the, the rest of the community is, how familiar they are, if they've been listening to what we're talking about with the DSAC people, but we're moving toward definitely defining what our curriculum is in all disciplines. We're focusing initially on English language arts and mathematics, but we're putting together what's called curriculum maps and aligning those so that we know what's happening both inter and intra-grade level. And as we do that and solidify that, and it gets matched up to what you hear about the Common Core standards and some of the assessment information that we have to go forward with, we'll be able to bring forward a greater case, if you will, to the school committee and to the public that they need to committee and to the public that they need to make a larger investment, but we're not there yet. With respect to the technology piece, and I was comforted to hear you say about the A.V., we, we do have A.V., but this day and age, most things are done through the, you know, the technology arena. And the committee heard a report at their last meeting that we're quite outdated with the equipment that we have. Steve Torrey, our tech services individual, I thought did a nice job of presenting kind of what the state of the art is here, what we have, what we don't have, and the outdatedness of it, given the requirements that the State Department of Education now require of school districts. The committee has it as a potential, as a capital item, and on a good day, if that went forward, great, we're, we're off on, you know, the right track. On a bad day, if we're able to get a piece of it, we're still on the right track. I don't know as if we'll ever be able to get there where we should that quickly, because if it is laid out over a five-year or greater investment, if you will, I can pretty much say that the technology's going to change. So, we'll probably just get caught up, and then things will be changing again. But it's a critical, critical need in the district, not just for our daily operation, but quite honestly, for us to survive as a modern-day school district in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, given the requirements that are asked of us. The A.V. piece is, as we refer to, is kind of the old stuff, and, and we do use it probably to a less, lesser extent than what we require and rely on with the technology component. But you've hit on two critical areas that we just have not been able to fully address.
Thank you, Dr. Malvi. Any committee members want to comment on anything that was said by Superintendent? If not, I'll go back to the public. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to address? You'll be next, Mary.
Louise Maya Dirks, 36, Donnelly Crossroad. I just want to say I'm very disappointed in your decision to eliminate a third grade position in East Brookfield. They've always maintained small classrooms, that's what they thrive with, and I think that by doing so, you're truly encouraging school choice out of the district.
Thank you. Mary?
Mary Brainey, Pine Acres, Spencer Finance Committee. I just have two questions and one comment. In the past, our transportation costs have been higher than some of the state averages. It was at the time, and I'm not sure what it is now, that we had chosen to bus within, anyone within one and a half miles, and the state reimburses that two miles. I know that with Wyatt Village, the decision was made when that was built, that busing would have to be done because of the lack of sidewalks and things like that. But I did not know if the policy of busing one and a half miles had changed or not, and if not, if there was any consideration given to charging for between one and a half and two miles, so that people could have, could still have bus transportation to help me one of the costs. And I'm just putting that out there because I, it, it had come up in the past in other school budget discussions. The second thing is, one of our biggest issues is students leaving because of school choice. And I guess I'd like to know what kind of, are you doing exit interviews? Are you surveying parents? Are you trying to find out why parents are taking their students out of the schools? And if it's giving you any information that would help you make decisions about how to keep kids in the schools? You know, I mean, that, it seems to me would be pretty valuable in figuring out what to spend the money on as we go forward. And I think the public needs to really understand that as well. And my comment simply is regarding technology, that those new PACC tests that are coming up to replace MCAS, from my understanding, are going to be given online, and I'm not sure that the state is making it negotiable to do them in paper and pencil. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Dr. Malvi, would you?
Sure. Let me work backwards, Mary, on that, on the, the technology piece. Again, that's one of the issues that I was referring to with respect to the state requiring districts to move toward. And what Mary referred to as the PACC assessment, that's going to be replacing, it's a new series of assessments, if you will, that it's going to replace the MCAS that we currently have throughout the Commonwealth. And the word is that the state is going to move that forward. We're not capable of handling that right now, given our technology. What are we going to do? I don't have the answer right now. Working with our tech people and administrators and other staff that are quite knowledgeable in the technology arena, we don't see that we could retrofit that we currently have to upgrade quick enough to go to this new PACC system. That's the downside. I think the upside is that many other school districts in the Commonwealth are in the same boat, if you will, and it's going to be a challenge for probably the majority of the state to adjust appropriately. And that doesn't mean that we just pick a number and, and wait our turn, because the, to me, the bigger issue is not just the assessment, but if we truly are going to use technology as a teaching tool, we're running out of air, if you will, and things are going to have to start to happen fairly soon, or we're going to be left behind, and technology's going to be sitting there kind of like your car that you don't take care of, and you go to put the key in, and it's not going to start. So, that's number one. With respect to the school choice issue, no, a survey has not been done. I think it's a great idea. We certainly can do it. I've been involved in other districts where we have tried to get a survey out there. You don't always get good data, but it's certainly worth the effort to ask our customers, and we can take a look at that to see what, what's a good way of doing it, because there are multiple instruments. And then obviously, talking to folks, why they're going out. I, whether I've asked people or they've come up and, and simply approached me, you know, the reasons that they're giving me is, just as this lady said with respect to the class size issue, and when you have a situation where you've got reasonable class sizes, and then we have to, you know, switch that all up, that's a real concern for parents. So, I'm sure that's one of the issues, the extracurricular activities that we may have lost over the years, the, the course offerings at the junior high and the high school level. You know, a lot of children come to school, not just for the academics, but there is a lot of interest there, and through the reductions over the years, I think that's driven some of our students away. But we'll be cognizant of that and, and try to get some good answers from people. I'm not from the, the business end on my career, obviously, but you, you know as well as I, good businesses market what they either produce or offer to people, so we can ask our customers, what are we missing? What, what would be necessary for your child to remain? And ask the, the students themselves. We've got some, you know, very bright and opinionated youngsters in our school districts that don't mind telling you what they want or what they would like to see, so we'll try to take that into consideration. With respect to the fees and the transportation, currently, and correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, but currently, we haven't changed our mileage requirement. We're still at the mile and a half. I know it came up last year with some discussion by the committee, but they opted not to make any adjustments on it. And even though we're at a mile and a half requirement, that is, that we can have students, you know, walk, if you will, to a bus stop and/or to a school. Last year, when the issue came up and I inquired about it, I was told that that had been the practice for some time, and there was no change. And also, we do transport some students within the mile and a half because of safety reasons. You know the town better than I, but we don't have adequate sidewalks every place where we go, and some of our roads are heavily traveled anyway at fairly good speeds, so there are occasions when we're transporting youngsters because of a safety issue. And last but not least, on the fee piece, that issue did come up, and I believe it had a healthy discussion, fees there and fees in other areas, but the final determination was not to move on it at that time.
Okay. Any members care to comment on the question or Dr. Malvi's response?
The, the only thing I would add, Mary, on the technology piece, this seems to be a common problem with the state of making these type of changes, yet not putting any money with what they're asking to be changed. We've been through that, as people have commented with the D SAC report, but we've got a lot of valuable information, a lot of things to do, no money to come with it. This is just another example. So, I think it's imperative that parents, as well as the school board, as this goes forward, that they write their state rep and state senator and say, "This is great. We're all in favor of it, but put some dollars with it to the school district to help them."
Anyone else? I'm sorry, Mary?
I just have a question going back to the possibility of charging for the busing. I could be wrong, but I was under the impression that due to the regional agreement in, as well as being reimbursed through, is it Chapter 71, that we could not charge for transportation.
Dr. Malvi or Julie, could you address that?
I, I'm not sure how the agreement handles it, Mary, and I'd have to look at it, but Julie, you want to touch?
I'm sure we cannot charge for anyone over a mile and a half. I've never heard of anyone trying to just charge for under a mile and a half, so I'm not sure about that, but over, we cannot.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else on the board? All right, anyone else from the public that would like to come to the mic with any comments, suggestions, questions? This is the opportunity that you have on the, but yes, Ron?
Okay, I really wasn't going to come up here, but as the principal of the only cut in the district, honestly, I feel compelled to come up here. As much as it pains Dr. Malvi, and I know it does, we've had many discussions about this, believe me, it pains me and my staff a lot more. Last year, when we went through this crisis, we all took major hits in our building, okay? None of us liked it, but you know what? We all understood it, and we all shared the pain, like I think somebody up there said. When I look up there and see one position in the district cut, I'm there, why? There, there has to be other ways. When I was up here last week, Vinny actually asked some very good questions of the principals. The first thing he asked was, what is the top three things to create more positive learning experiences in the building? And my first, number one answer by far was that the school committee, administration, and staff all work together, and I meant it. And I know some of you came up afterwards and said, "You know what, Ron? We agree with you." I'm not sure how cutting one teacher in one building has us all working together. Next, again, Vinny asked another great question, is about safety in the building. You do realize for every staff member we lose, the building becomes just a little bit less safe, okay? And another question that was asked was, how does this address what was in the D SAC report? Well, I, I'm pretty sure that cutting a teacher is not what was recommended in the report. There are other ways to do it. I would strongly urge you, instead of eliminating that one position, and I've stated the reasons why many times, so I'm not really going to go into that right now, I would strongly urge you, every one of you in the last year has said the very last thing you want to do is cut classroom teachers. Every one of you said that, but yet the one thing you're cutting right now is a classroom teacher. I would urge you to put that $55,000 back in the budget. Everything that was added there is needed. I would, the assistant principal is needed at Wyatt Village. That was a mistake to get rid of that position. Cutting our supplies and everything, that is needed. Put the $55,000 back in the budget, and do not cut any staff this year, so we can move forward. Because I'll tell you what, to lose a staff member, and I'm not even going to go to the who the person will be in the building, because that's just a whole nother issue, but how do you move forward when you are losing another staff member for another year? Okay? So, I urge you to put the $55,000 back in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Anyone else from the public that would like to comment?
My name is Carol Bossi from 29 Grove Street. I just wondered, I know in the past, we had sports fees, we rescinded sport fees, we don't have them anymore. Has it been beneficial to remove those, the fees, from the parents and put it into the budget? Or has, you know, would it be beneficial to put that in? I know, I think the last time it was spoken about, it was $48,000 or $40,000 that would be saved. That might be a teacher. Just a thought.
Thank you, Carol. Mr. O'Brien, do you care to comment on that?
It would be nice if we didn't have to make any of those cuts. I agree with Mr. Tomlin completely, as for the athletic user fees, which we got rid of. When we talk about how do we bring students to this district, that's one of the main things that kids look at to come into a district. You look at school choice. If you look at schools with high school choice numbers, usually it reflects new facilities, new athletic fields, sporting teams such as that. There are an increase of almost 40% of students taking place, actively taking place on athletic teams. 40%. That pays huge dividends down the road with classroom behavior, academic success, so I do believe it would be a mistake to go into that direction for looking for revenue that way. I always call it a double taxation on parents. They're paying their money to send their children to school, and now they're hit with another tax to be in a, taking place with extracurricular activities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Anyone else from the public who would like to comment? Okay, Carol.
And I understand that. I understand all those things. I think, I think of it as double taxation, when the taxpayers are paying for the academics for the students, and then they have to pay an additional part to, to maintain the sports. I think it's important, but I also think that we have a lot of people leaving because of school choice. I don't know if that's actually keeping the people here, so just another thought.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing any. At this point, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cludia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Delighted. At this point, it's approximately five past seven. We'll now go to the regular scheduled meeting, and the first item on the agenda will be the student reports from the high school in Knox Trail. Are those students here? Do it come down to the mic, please? Please give your name.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Lysia Fagarsky, and I am a freshman at Proudty this year. David Proudty has hosted a successful blood drive on February 28th. A lot of students donated, and that's great, and we're saving lives. On February 26th, Proudty's Got Talent took place. There was 17 different acts, everything from BMX bike riding to singing to magic. Proudty definitely has talent. This week, from Wednesday to Friday, Student Council will be at Hyannis, attending the annual Student Council conference. There also are MCAS pre-tests going on, retests, this week, or they are going on for sophomores. This month, the music department will be shining, thanks to Ms. Bucier and Mr. Wage. The band will have a concert on the 13th, and the chorus will be also having their country concert on the 20th. On April 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., Mary Queen of the Rosary Church Hall will be hosting the Jenamar McLaughlin Memorial Scholarship Dinner. Tickets can only be bought in advance for Tickets can only be bought in advance for $10 by April 2nd. All proceeds of this event will go to the scholarship in honor of Jen McLaughlin. On March 12th, Mark Manila will give a motivational speech to the senior class. And also on Monday, March 31st, a rock band made up of volunteer U.S. Army, volunteer, U.S. Armies, will perform for the concert, for the student body, will perform for the concert. Also, the boys, usually, the boys varsity basketball team had a very successful season, qualifying for the Clark Tournament and District Playoffs. Coach Scott Dion did a great job, and this was a true team effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michaela Duquette, and I am the media representative in Knox Trail's National Junior Honor Society. On March 7th, Knox Trail will be hosting a family night from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Staff will be playing basketball against the students. It will be a fun night of playing basketball and eating pizza. National Junior Honor Society will be holding a St. Patrick's Day dance on March 14th. Seventh graders will be going on a field trip to Preacherate Place for Science and Engineering on March 12th. Knox Trail has partnered with FlexCon, where employees from FlexCon come into seventh and eighth grade classrooms to work with students. On April 9th, students will tour FlexCon and have a final review of their projects. March 14th is Pie Day. The students will each get a pie and do many activities with matched products. During the month of March, Peer Leaders are sponsoring Spirit Days. On March 21st, we will be holding a March Madness tournament for Knox Trail students. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Teacher Association Reports. Mr. James, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Next is Hearing for Visitors. Is there any visitors that would like to be heard?
Bob Cerber, 23 Summit Street. Dr. Malvi, I'd like to commend you for finding $833,000 back in October, prior to the special town meeting on October 26th. Keeping in mind that this money was found after two failed overrides, and the administration telling us there was no more money to be cut, we have some questions regarding the money that was found. During the week of October 1st, 2013, through October 11th, 2013, you found $625,000. We would like a copy of the account where the money came from, and a copy of the account of where the money went to. During the week of October 14th, 2013, through October 18th, 2013, another $58,000 was found. We would like a copy of the account where the money came from, and a copy of where the account of where the money went to. In closing, Dr. Malvi, in an anonymous letter, made some serious allegations about how this money was moved around within the system, and was alleged to be from overpayment of vendors in the system. While some have downplayed the serious nature of the letter due to its being anonymous, the fact is, the money was found after the letter reached the administration, and money was put back into the system. For the record, we at the other side know that you had nothing to do with any of this. You weren't even around when all of this allegedly occurred, and you handed over $830,000 to the community. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Superintendent, do you care to respond?
Well, I would just question the wording that's used by Mr. Cerber to say "found." We didn't find anything. What we did was, we reduced those dollar amounts, and we'll check them to make sure they're, the exact figures, and be happy to show where the reductions were made and where the money came from. We did that in public session anyway, in the presentations to the school committee, but I don't want anyone to misconstrue the words that are used when you say "found," because I take issue with that, Mr. Cerber. It's really reductions that were made. Money was not found anywhere. And any review of budget, certainly with what we've done here to get to the budget for this year, as well as going into the FY15, money is not found. Decisions are made, and some of them are very, very uncomfortable to make recommendations of where money would be moved from. And that comes, at times, with a heavy burden of doing away with certain things in order to cover other areas. So that's the only correction I would make, and we certainly have that information in our records.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Dr. Malvi, regardless of whether you take exception to my words or what I'm saying, the bottom line is, we went through two overrides, and you specifically got up and told us, on many occasions prior to those overrides, that there's no more money left to be found. This money was released after the overrides and prior to the special town meeting. So you can sit there and say, "Well, it was cuts, it was this, it was that." I'm not buying that. And I understand, this was not your fault. This is nothing you had anything to do with. Don't forget, Dr. Hicks also put us through an override scenario in 2010, leading into 2011, telling us there was no money in the budget. When Dr. Nauman came in, remarkably, almost the same amount of money was found again in an E&amp;D account, $800,000. Yet, when we did budget reviews, and we did a lot of budget reviews leading up to that, that was a very contentious time, and no money was found until after he left. So pardon me if I don't totally trust that answer, or if you take umbrage to the fact that this money was found, or it was done through reductions. Why wasn't it done through reductions prior to those overrides?
Is that it?
That'll do it. Thank you, Kevin.
Superintendent, do you care to respond?
Sure, I'm still going to take issue with the word "found," Mr. Cerber, because it's incorrect. It's incorrect, and that's what you tend to do. You take information and put your own spin on it to make it incorrect, to stir up the pot. And I'm not going to tolerate that as superintendent of this school district, because the word is "reduction." And nothing was found, and I did not offer that on my own accord. I was directed by the school committee to make the reductions, or at least come back with recommendations. So I just want us to be careful of how we view the issue. That's all.
No, no.
I think I have, but you're going to continue to try to twist it and put words in my mouth and reframe it with incorrect information, and I'm just not going to stand for it.
Okay, that's going to be the end of it. Is there any other? You're welcome. Is there anyone else that would like to comment, have any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. The next item on the report is the secretary's report in your packet. You have the approval of the minutes for meetings that we've had. The first one is approval of the minutes of regular meeting of February 11th, 2014. Does anyone have any changes or corrections they'd like made? If not, is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Motion made by Mr. Cludier and seconded by?
I'll second it.
By Mr. Cludier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next is approval of minutes of the budget meeting of February 24th, 2014. Are there any correction to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Who, Mr. Chairman?
Motion made by Mr. Nordquist and seconded by Mr. Cludier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next is approval of minutes of the budget meeting of February 25th, 2014. Any corrections in regards to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Motion by Mr. Cludier, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cludier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Last one, the approval of minutes of the budget meeting of February 26th, 2014. Are there any corrections that have been made to that? If not, a motion to approve.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Mr. Nordquist, seconded?
Second.
By Mr. Cludier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, so voted. Next item is the financial report, approval of the expenditure report of February 28th, 2014. Members should find that report in your packet. Are there any questions in regards to the expenditure report from members? Are there any comments that the administration would care to make in regards to it?
Can I just make a comment? Does everyone see in your packet? I added another sheet today, that's the one with the yellow highlighting. We need to add another transfer to the list for heating fuel for Knox Trail and the high school, taking it from building.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
Taking, we need additional money for heating oil at Knox Trail and the high school, so we need to reduce the building maintenance lines to increase the lines for heat, those two buildings.
Okay. Any questions from any members in regards to?
Mr. Chairman, I just, I just want to make sure on the first two, 20 and 10, and then the next four, next four is in parentheses. Does that, does that add up, the first two, Julie?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Any other questions from members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cludier.
Motion to approve the transfers as requested.
A motion made by Mr. Cludier to approve the transfers as requested.
Second.
There was a second, seconded by Mr. Nordquist. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Okay, next item on the agenda, unfinished business, curriculum report. Dr. Malvi?
Just a further update, again, going back to ongoing work with the DSAC group of the Department of Education. We had an additional professional development day knocked last week, where the primary emphasis on the curriculum end was the continuation of the work on the curriculum mapping and the alignment. And I believe, according to the folks that are working with us overseeing it from the DSAC group, we're making significant progress. And I forget who it is, Karen, help me, that some folks have stepped up internally to do the uploading of the information on the computer. So we continue that work, and the relationship is very, very positive. I also would report out that I had a very productive meeting with the regional area director of this DSAC group. I met with him earlier in the week, and continued the planning stages to see how much more we could get out of them this year before we get into the last couple months here. And they are committing to additional work with us. His name is Dr. Joseph Connors. We refer to him as the RAD, that's Regional Area Director. And he's kind of the go-to person for a lot of things that we do with DSAC, but in particular, he has the approval authority of grants. So we want to stay closely connected with him. In addition to that, Karen Zaleski has made further arrangements for the DSAC folks to come out. Correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, but I think it's in April, the first part of April, to have visits at the Knox Trail Junior High School and Wyer Village, am I correct? To spend time with the staff throughout the day. So as I say, we're getting a lot from them. We're making progress. I will continue to say it's a two, three-year, at least, to get us to base information, if you will. And then, I hope, whoever comes in in my stead continues with the work and creates a typical five-year cycle on curriculum development. Hopefully, we're out of this status of Level 3 that got us into having to have DSAC come out and do the report, and then the continued work that we do with them. So hopefully, within, you know, two, three years, we'll put that behind us, but we will all have learned by their involvement, and I think our staff will be better prepared to deal with the future. So we continue to make progress in that arena. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for any of the members for the superintendent in regards to that report? Okay, if not, next item on the agenda is the FY15 budget vote of the committee. You've heard the presentation made by the administration. We're looking at $24,096,795. Now, the chair will open it up to the pleasure of the board. If there's members that would like to discuss or have any comments on the presentation that you heard tonight, and then when we, everyone has their opportunity, if there's anyone that hasn't in regards to that, then I'll entertain a vote on a number. So are there any members that have any questions, or care to make any comments in regards to the budget? If not, is there a motion to support the level service budget?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cludier.
In FY14 budget, current year that we're in, as was depicted by Dr. Malvi and Julie when they were making their presentation, we removed quite a list of teachers, director of teaching and learning, facilities manager, Wyer Village dean of students, seven elementary teachers, five junior high school teachers, four high school teachers, a preschool teacher, 1.5 special education teacher, one psychologist, one elementary band program, one guidance secretary, $309,000 to close, that we saved by closing Maple Street School, and $124,000 of supplies were removed, and $35,000 in computer supplies. I'm just going to, I'm just going to venture a wild guess. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Malvi, that equals somewhere around $833,000.
Probably a good portion of it.
Okay. I just wanted to get that out there. And we had an awful tough time getting a budget set. In fact, the district, as a district, didn't set a budget last year. We waited and waited, and we allowed the state to come in and set our budget. Because the communities within the district couldn't agree, and the residents didn't want to support the budget. Now, there's been, people have come to the microphone during the public hearing this evening, and I appreciate all the comments that were made, and they indicated that, you know, why should we remove a teacher from East Brookfield? And I would offer that I think that that's the wrong way to look at it. I think the way to look at it is, why would we want to remove a teacher from the district? Until this district starts functioning as a district, we're not going to get anywhere. And this district, I said these same exact words last year when I sat here, chooses not to function as a district. They choose to function separately. And although there are certain things in our district agreement that would have to be modified to change the way we operate, certainly could do that. But the first time you make a comment in a way to save money for the district, the obstructions go up. The walls go up. I don't want my children mixed with those children from that other community, or vice versa. It's horrible. We're a district. We shouldn't be talking about removing a teacher from one particular school. We're removing a teacher from a district. Is it the right thing to do? No. Is it the right thing to do for this budget? I'm going to venture to guess that if this budget passes this evening and goes down to the two communities, that it's not supported this year. I'm going to venture that guess. And you know why? We just don't want to reinvest in education. And you get guys like Bob Cerber, who come to the microphone, and they choose to take and spin words, whether it's the superintendent's words, whether they're my words, it doesn't really matter whose words, take little tiny pieces of truth, twist them and contort them, and throw them at the wall and see what sticks. And you know what? I haven't said one word, not one word, I haven't spoken against anyone that's come to that microphone to speak. Haven't spoken against Mr. Cerber's ridiculous accusations against this school district. He was a member for one year on this board. He couldn't hack it, so he got out. But now he throws the softballs, throws them at, not just, he could throw them all day at me, but he chooses to get into the gutter. I don't know about all you folks, but I've about had it with Mr. Cerber and his comments. He chooses to stand up in front of a group of people, and nobody wants to take up and get on a soapbox and defend what's right, and nobody wants to speak up against him, and they let people hear him. And he shoots his mouth off with half-truths. Is that the district that you folks all want to be part of? You want Bob Cerber running your district? Is that what you want? We've got 50 people, if that, in this auditorium for the budget hearing for the school district. It's a shame. The investment in education in this community, these communities, is deplorable. And the only ones that can change it are the voters in the communities, the only ones that can change it. Nobody wants to vote higher taxes. Nobody wants to pay another penny in taxes. But it's the right thing to do. You can invest in education now, but you can all just watch your property values just You can invest in education now, or you can all just watch your property values just go into the toilet. We could talk about school, uh, school choice, you know, I, I didn't support removing athletic fees, but that was a vote that this board took, and it's the vote. I don't necessarily agree, but I don't have any data to support that the fact that we don't have user fees i- is, is, uh, keeping school choi-, uh, school kids here in our district, I don't think they're not choicing out because of that, or I don't think they're really coming here because of that, but I don't have any stats to prove that, and you know what? It's about 40,000 or 45,000 dollars a year, that's not our problem, if 45,000 dollars was our problem, we wouldn't have a problem. Technology, capital, 632,000 dollars, those are computers that we have in our classrooms that are not upgradable, there's not enough memory, we can't even upgrade it, we couldn't put Windows Seven on it, it won't support it, we have to replace that for our children. You heard about the new testing requirements and that it's gonna be online, well, whether it ends up being online or not, the simple fact is, I, I, I think we really need to invest in technology, but that 632,000, that's not even the whole nut, that's a piece of it, that's a piece of what's required, and that was presented to us at our last meeting by Steve Torrey, who was working with our, uh, well, who was working for us as, as in the, uh, Technology Department, and he made it clear that that wasn't across the board, that just was the start. You know, there's a lot of needs in this district, and some of those, I've stood here before, and I've said that money doesn't need to be addressed, uh, to be, uh, allocated to those needs to resolve those issues, and that is true in some cases, but in other cases, when you're looking for 632,000 dollars in technology money, it's money that's needed, it's money. Quite frankly, I think we should be cutting teachers anywhere, getting back to this point I started with, but when you look across the district and you look at class sizes across the district, it's not one community against the other, we're a district, take the boundary lines out of it. I said it at the last meeting, we should've called ourselves Acme School District instead of Spencer East Brookfield, to get the, uh, the, the town names out of it. I think in all, all in all, this budget is about as good a budget as we're gonna put together and, and, and look for the tax pays of these two communities to support. We went down the road last year of trying to get this community back where it needed to go, it didn't happen, didn't happen by a long shot, it failed by an overwhelming majority in both communities. So, I support the budget as a whole, certainly doesn't have everything I'd like to see in this budget, but I do support it as a whole, I wanted to bring some historical data as to how we got from point to point to point, this board did, did do what had to be done, we did make the cuts, and, uh, we didn't really want to make those cuts, but we had to make those cuts. We are putting in this budget an assistant principal back into this building, and I said it publicly last week, or two weeks ago at our meeting, that last year I voted against it and I made a mistake, this, this building needs an assistant principal, and it was one of the things that I was gonna do my best to see that it get put in there. I'm one vote on this board. I think that if we could do anything for ourselves, we could go back and spread the whole truth, not little tiny pieces of the truth, and talk to other parents, talk to other teachers, talk to the people in the community, and explain the situation to them with the whole truth, because certainly the words that are getting out from the other side are little tiny, tiny pieces of the truth, and the people that are spreading it know better, and they've sat here, and they've failed at this job, so they moved on, and it's easy to throw stones. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other members, uh, that would like to call, uh, Mary?
In all due respect, I will not support a budget that eliminates a teacher from any It's bare bones as it is, we've taken everything away from them, the one thing we can give these students are their teachers, getting by should not be acceptable for any of our students in any of our schools, and, and again, in all due respect, Mr. Cludier, I've never heard anybody stand up at that mic and say, "I don't want my kids going to school with kids from another dis-, another town," I've never heard that. One thing we all, but, and you say East Brookfield, East Brookfield is gonna s- speak up for their, their teacher, because it says East Brookfield teacher. One of the things that East Brookfield has is their small class size, anybody in this district, you lose a teacher, you never get it back, people, teachers retire, they're never replaced. Other schools have Title I, East Brookfield does not have the benefit of Title I, they do have the benefit of a small class size, so in, in this case, I will not re-, support this budget that will eliminate any teacher from any of the buildings of the Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, Mr. Cody?
Well, first, I agree with Mary, um, I won't support removing the East Brookfield teacher, uh, I support the, well, I begrudgingly support the budget, I think it's too low, but, um, I support the amendments to it as long as, uh, the East Brookfield teacher is not cut, so that would add 55,000 dollars back into the, uh, onto that 24.1. Um, that being said, to what Mr. Cludier said, we are one district, uh, but we're two separate towns within that district, and I completely understand why East Brookfield is defending its teacher, uh, we're, they're two separate towns, they made separate decisions, they have separate elementary schools, uh, and they, it's separate situations, it is within a district, but I, I just, I, I don't think, I, I think Pep talks about calling us Acme School District and, and stuff, it, you can try to coat this any way you want and, and make it go down easier, but it's not going to, we shouldn't cut a teacher. Second of all, from sitting here last year where I was part of the group that was attacked constantly about what happened, um, I learned not to respond to people, uh, directly when they come to the microphone, it's a, it's a bad idea, but I'm gonna jump into this between, uh, you guys and Mr. Cerber. When we, when we sat here last February, we were at 26.4 million dollars, and we absolutely needed 26.4 million dollars, and we reduced that down to 23.4, 23.5 million dollars. I'm confused on how we got there, I've seen so many PowerPoint presentations and gotten so many sheets, eight, uh, the 833,000 dollars is a small portion of the, the 2-point-whatever million dollars that we got rid of last year, so I, I, I guess, just badgering one person about, that is asking about this 833,000 dollars, maybe the way that he puts it isn't the greatest, uh, maybe he doesn't have the, the, the best personality for, for coming down here and speaking to us, but I sat on the board, and I, I don't, I don't remember where 20, where, where all of that went, when we were at 26.4 million dollars, it was presented so many times, so I can see it, and that does deal with our credibility, because even with this budget, we still need an override, we're still gonna come up short, this 26, this 24.1 million dollar budget, it's, we still don't have enough, we still are, what, 200,000 dollars short? So where's that gonna come from? That's gonna come from an override, and we have no credibility, so maybe explaining in detail where, how we got from 26.4 million down to 23.4 might help our credibility a little bit, instead of arguing with people that are out in the audience. With all that being said, once again, I support this budget without the East Brookfield teacher being eliminated.
Uh, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman? I concur with both Josh and Mary, I do not support cutting the East Brookfield Elementary School teacher, and I would like that added back to the budget, please.
Uh, anyone else? Uh, Mr. Nodquist?
Chairman, I just wanna ask you a question, Mr. Chairman, on the capital items, uh, do you think how we're gonna address this, this, these items?
On the capitals, they were taking out the, uh, there would be two ways that it could be addressed, um, the, the Spencer Selectmen have been invited us and have offered to give us a seat on the Capital Needs Committee for the town, for us to bring our capital needs, uh, to that committee, and to get in line with all the other departments and to, uh, state our case and fight for our position in hopes that we could get some of those items funded, uh, through the Capital Needs Committee. Uh, I, I think that's a good route to go, uh, I, I think it's a good way of working cooperatively with the town, and then we always have the option, if we felt that we were being pushed to the back, or that we felt that our concerns were superior to other concerns that were coming up on the, on that committee, we would always have the option with the vote of the board to put forward dead exclusion articles to address those items, so, we, we have a couple, uh, different ways that we could go about it and, and keep it outside of the budget.
Just what you said, uh, if the board goes dead exclusion, is that by ourselves, or what, do we have to go in conjunction with the towns?
Uh, I, I'm not sure, uh, Mr. Fahad is here, he might be able to address this, uh, do you have a Capital Needs Committee? You don't, okay, all right, so, I, I would assume we would deal with you, with you folks directly with this, and if, if we would...
Talking about capital, why do you separate the fact that for our town-owned buildings...
Right, right, yeah.
In fact, I see something in your budget, or improvements at Lake Street School, it shouldn't be in your budget, it should be in the town's management.
When they moved out?
They own that.
Yeah.
Are you aware of that?
On which item, Leo? I'm sorry?
I'm not sure it actually made it in. It's not actually in the budget.
It didn't, oh, it didn't make it in.
No, yeah, originally we had it, but, uh, it's...
Those kinds of things should be dealt with on individual, um, by town faces when it's...
Right, yeah, so if it was something that affected both communities, Mr. Nodquist, then we would deal with the Capital Needs Committee as well as the Selectmen from East Brookfield, who was in a school that's owned strictly by Spencer, we'd be dealing with the Capital Needs Committee.
So wanting to vote, right, these capital items are not included, correct?
Correct. That's right, these capital items are outside the budget. Is that correct, Dr. Malby?
Yes.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. All right.
Sorry.
We are waiting. I was just looking to see what you had there for your list. This one right here. Okay, yeah, no, all right, I don't have it, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I just didn't have the right sheet, I'm sorry.
All right, anyone else with any questions or comments in regards, Chris?
Out of the 645, 237, is, would that be the request for the override, or is it just a portion of that?
Uh, it depends how it shakes out, that's, that's the current increase in the proposed budget, but depending on the discussion with the municipal, uh, folks, um, that then would have to be determined of, uh, what the actual dollar amount would be for the override, and I can't predict where that's going to go, because we'll have those conversations of what they think they have for available, uh, money to apply to it, despite what the state may be saying, but then that backs its way into what the parties would agree on as the figure to go forward for the override.
Do we have any baseline on that number now, or is it just a guess?
Uh, I don't, I haven't had any conversation, um, I, I've had conversation with the town administrator and Spencer, only to the extent, uh, to let him know that we are moving forward and that the committee is having deliberations, uh, I've had some limited conversation with Mr. Fahad, Fahad, uh, but we haven't really got down to any nitty-gritty on it yet.
I, I, I think, Mr. Nodquist, uh, between both communities, where we sit right now, between both communities, we're probably somewhere between 350,000 to 400,000 dollars short of what they would be giving us to meet the, um, the minimum net school spending. Uh, the, the steps that we'll take after a budget is, is adopted or approved here tonight, if it is, uh, then the chair would be entertaining, setting up, uh, meetings with the Spencer Board of Selectmen and the East Brookfield Board of Selectmen, uh, and the administration, so we then can sit down and see where we can come to an agreement on this, find out exactly what they can give us, uh, if they have any additional funds to give us, and at that time, we'll come up with some number, if in fact, we do need an override, uh, and there's other issues that, uh, come into play as we're waiting for figures from different parts of the grants and, and the budget that may change this number as well.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Nodquist?
That was Mr. King, Mr. Chairman, but that's okay, uh, you just to get back, in other words, what you're saying now, this isn't the final budget, this is just a, just a budget you're gonna send down and it's gonna be subject to change, is that what you're saying?
As, as what happens every year, this is a, a living, breathing document, this number is going to change, and it's gonna continue to change as information comes in from the state, as information comes in from other actions that the board has taken, and as information comes in from meetings with the Selectmen from both communities, so, this is simply to get a number tonight, so that we can send it to both communities, so that we don't hold them up from being able to do what they have to do, like happened last year, but then we're gonna be continuing to work on this number and fine-tuning it. Obviously, the goal is to try to do this without an override, but, uh, we'll work as close as we can to get to that number, and then, uh, we'll have to go forward, uh, with whatever we have at, at that time, but, yes, we'll continue to work on it once the, uh, number's set tonight, uh, but the, the important part tonight is to come into compliance, to have those numbers back to the town, uh, so that they can go forward and do what they have to do. Thank you. Any other comments, uh, or questions from the board? So, uh, seeing none, the chair would first ask, is there a motion, uh, to entertain the level service budget as presented by the administration for 24 million, oh, ninety-six, seven, ninety-five? Motion. Uh, motion made by Mr. Cludier, is there a second? Hearing no second, uh, is there another motion, uh, to be made by the board?
Motion to, uh, approve, uh, budget that, I believe it would be 24 million, 151,795 dollars, that is the budget with all of the additions, um, it also reflects the savings less the East Brookfield teacher reduction for 55,000 dollars.
So the motion basically is to reinstate that teaching position?
The motion is to accept all of the amendments, the additions, um, less the East Brookfield teacher reduction, to reinstate that.
Okay, so a motion made by Mr. Cody for 24 million, 151,795, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Gerishman, discussion, any comments by any board members?
I got one.
Mr. King?
I totally understand where you guys are going with that, you know, and I applaud you for it, but I, I just think at the end of the day, if we do add it in, it's still gonna come down to an override, so I mean, I think we all realize that that would be something that had to go anyway, so, I would support it, for the short-lived time, it'll be there.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cludier.
As I stated before, I, I guess we need to start acting like a district, we have five classes in third grade in the Spencer School, Elementary Schools, with 26 children in each class, by doing this, you'd be giving two classes to the East Brookfield Elementary School with 14 students in a class, where's the equality in education in the district? There's no equality in education, it's a district, the taxpayers of the town of Spencer and the taxpayers of the town of East Brookfield pay their shares, not for one school, but for every single school in the district, East Brookfield Elementary School, Lake Street School, Wire Village School, Knox Trail, and the high school. We should operate equally as a district.
Any other comments? Mr. Nodquist?
I would support what Mr. Cludier just says, and I would not support this motion.
Uh, Josh?
Well, I, I, to what Mr. Cludier said, I, I don't know how you can compare the two, you've got, you've got one school where you've got six grades, and the majority are now gonna be one teacher per grade, and then when you look at Wire Village, where you do have higher class sizes, you have a school where there are multiple teachers for each grade, I, I just think it's a bad idea to, to, to have the majority of the classrooms in that school have one teacher per grade, I mean, you're, you're, I, I, I don't know, I, I'm not a teacher, but it, it seems like you're locking that teacher in solitary confinement, and, and they're just dealing with those, that small group of students, and they're not having a lot of interaction with anything else, you're not exactly comparing two of the same things when you compare Wire Village... You're not exactly comparing two of the same things when you compare Wire Village and East Brookfield. The situations are different. The towns are different. The situations are different. So, I don't think it's exactly the same. So, I think your argument, it has some holes in it. So, I think we should keep that teacher there because we've already gotten rid of the three teachers from last year and created that situation with those other three classes. I think it's a bad idea to do the fourth class in that way, so...
Any other comments by members?
Can I just get one more question?
Yeah, Chris.
I mean, knowing where I think this is going to go anyways, but I mean, I guess we'll ask Mr. Tomlin. What's better, going into the year with the one or going into the year with two and more than likely losing one when we don't get an override? I mean, they're both bad. I... I hear you, but I'm just saying. I mean, you know the end of the story. We're probably not going to get an override. So, I mean, you know, I'd hate to give it to you now and then take it away from you and...
Excuse me one second. If you want to speak, come to the mic, please. Answer the questions, and we'll have one at a time. A question will be asked, and I'll entertain an answer. And if there's a follow-up question, we'll take it.
Okay.
Tomlin, you can respond to Mr. King.
That's a tough question, but you know what? I'll take my chances with the two at the beginning of the school year and hope that the intelligence of everybody would not combine classes in the middle of a school year, that they'd find a way to keep them separate if they start off the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlin. Mr. King, you have any follow-up question?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Any other questions or comments by any members? Okay, then the motion before us is from Mr. Cludier of $24,157,795 on a roll call vote. Mrs. Gershman?
Aye.
Mr. Cludier?
No.
Mr. Cludier?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Naughtus?
No.
Messia?
Aye.
And the chair votes no. Is there another motion by the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make that vote the first time around for $24,096,795.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Naughtus for $24,096,795. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cludier. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In his motion, I need clarification, and that's why I seconded. Does that include the additions and the savings, which offset each other?
Yes, it does. $24,096,795 includes the additions that the administration has recommended. Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Is that it, Mr. Cludier?
Yes.
Any other questions from any members? Okay, we have a motion, a second, no further discussion. On a roll call vote, Mrs. Gershman?
No.
Mr. Cludier?
Aye.
Mr. Cludier?
No.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Naughtus?
Aye.
Ms. Messia?
No.
The chair votes aye. Is there any of the motions before the board? If not, folks should keep in mind our next meeting is March 25th?
25th.
25th? If we don't have a budget approved tonight, everybody can enjoy going forward to another district meeting and going through that experience that we went through last year. It should be very clear to members here that no one's going to get everything that they want. I think we're rolling a real dangerous dice. If we haven't learnt our lesson from the voters of both communities, not just Spencer, but East Brookfield as well, as much as we don't like it, don't be surprised when you come back here with less than what we're asking for now. And we'll be having those same questions as to why are we losing two teachers, or three teachers, or four teachers? I think it's imperative for this board to come to some agreement and to support a recommendation that's coming forward from the superintendent. We took a budget that came forward from the superintendent. We all met with the principals. We all were given every opportunity to ask any questions that we had in regards to the principals. We then went forward and spent quite some time making recommendations to the superintendent and the administration on items that this board, every member on this board, I think, had something that they wanted to add in here. The result of it, the administration went through and looked at the request. They came back and are recommending putting in the vice principal at Wire Village that most everybody thought was a mistake in doing. We were finally able to have the administration refer back to us some $17,500 for workbooks that everybody at this table has sat and criticized and waved up in the air of torn workbooks and all the woe of us of having to copy things on a copying machine to give to the students. And the administration has finally come forward with this budget of giving us those funds to be able to now purchase workbooks for K through six to bring us in line with Common Core. Yet, we don't want to do that. Yet, these same folks will leave this room tonight and criticize everything that's not done for the children of this district. The administration has come forward, and they've been able to find funds to put into the libraries at the high school, at Knox Trail, at Wire Village. Another issue that members of this board have sat here and criticized administration for, saying, year after year after year, they've been on the board, that there's been no money going to these departments. We now have a budget today that finally puts some things in place for the kids. Not everything that we need, but we're making progress to get some things back to the kids. The administration has come in and recommended the funds for virtual high school to expand what we offer for the advanced placement kids in the district. The same committee has criticized because we had to stop that program mid-year because of items that had to be negotiated. We had a common agreement with the Teachers Association. They came forward to help make this happen, to be able to start those classes back in. There should be applauded for that. The administration has now come forward and kicked in $7,500 of additional funds so that we can expand those classes and offer even more classes than what we do now. We may have kids that now would be able to take engineering classes or robotics, or whatever the additions are going to be. We sit here and say, what do we have to do to stop kids from leaving the district? Those are the things we have to do to stop kids from leaving the district. And I think it's immoral and it's irresponsible at this point not to support what the superintendent and the administration is coming forward and recommending. There are going to be changes to this budget. As things go forward, there may be more money available where things can be brought back or can be added as we try to fine-tune this number and go forward. It's a living document. It's not the number that we're going to be locked into. But we have a responsibility, I think, to do this, to act in good faith with the town fathers from both communities so that they can meet their timeframes and be able to do the things that they have to do from a town perspective and not be held up from us. This is going to be a disastrous event occurring again if we have to get down this road. So, I'll ask one last time from the chair. Is there a motion to support the level service budget that has been presented by the superintendent and the administration?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question before we move on.
Mr. Cludier?
This $55,000 for this teacher, does that include, that reduction, does that include every possible expense that can go along with reducing a teacher? Does it have every possible expense built into that? Is that actual savings?
Mr. Superintendent?
Or, sorry, not to cut you off, but... Or, down the road, are we going to find out that that savings was actually less because something came up, some other expense associated with it came up? Because my fear here is, once we cut it from this budget, it's going to take an act of God to get it back in. And I know things are going to change in this budget. Just like you said, a lot of things are going to change in this budget. But once we cut it, it's going to be almost impossible to get it back in. If it stays in the budget, I think we'd be more apt to find the money to cover it. So, first, you know, is that the actual savings? And second, is there any way we can find a way to keep it in this budget?
Okay. Dr. Malvi?
Let me see if I can work it through this way here, and correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, but this is a budget figure that we use, kind of an average salary, if you will. It's a placeholder. It's been used consistently, and a lot of school districts do a similar exercise, if you will. So, to your point, it may not actually be. It could be a tad less. It could be a tad more. But we do a pretty good job of hitting the target. So, I'm not necessarily worried about it, how close would we be or off. Particularly as we go forward and hire new people, I'm always sensitive to what the budget has, therefore, what can we afford when we actually make a commitment to someone? So, that's the first part. Julie, add to it?
I have one thing. Because of retirees, we wouldn't have any employment or anything else. Basically, it would be a position that would be gone because of retiring, and we wouldn't have to replace. So, we wouldn't have any added cost that we might if we were laying someone off.
You satisfied, Josh? Any further question?
Well, just more of a comment. I just think, once it's gone, it's gone. And it's going to be very hard to put it back in.
I'd like to ask Dr. Malvi, when you're looking at this and you've made these recommendations, if things change down the road as we go forward with these meetings and we go through some of the decisions that we're going to be making in the next few months, where would this lie, this position lie in your list of priorities as far as if you're able to have money to come back? Where would this be in your list?
High?
Yeah.
Very high. I mean, you know, whether you believe me or not, it's a difficult thing for me to recommend it. But you only can get so much water out of the stone here, so that's why we came forward, knowing that we already had precedent set with the other one-teacher classrooms, okay? But I'd like to add further, but I'll stop if you have a further question on it. Back to Josh's commentary on it and Julie's piece, I hope everyone understood what she was saying. That is, this is a budget figure, but we would expect, because we have a number of retirees, that we wouldn't actually lose a staff member that's currently on board. This would be done through attrition, that is, from the number of retirees that we would have. We have a few elementary folks, I believe, and we would try to make the reduction there because of people moving out. So, it's a kind of a zero-sum game, if you will. Now, having said that, also, I would throw this out as maybe a compromise for the committee that you can do a couple of different things, and that would be approve it as is with the teacher, or the salary, if you will, back in at the $55,000. Obviously, it increases it, or you could, well, contingent upon administration attempting to identify the additional $55,000 in the budget. And it gets back to the point that I was trying to make earlier, that we don't find things, but if the committee takes certain action, then we're obligated to go back. And it's a case of, well, what do we reduce in an area in order to offset this? So, I'd be willing to do that, number one, if you put the 55 back in. Additional piece on it would be, you could vote that contingent upon finding the money. And even though you approve a budget tonight, you can always amend it if we're not able to find the additional $55,000. And the reason I'm throwing this out is that you're under a timeline to get a budget approved into the municipal side by March 18. And that's all governed by the law and the backup of time for when town meetings will be held and when the towns have to act on it. So, that date has already been set. At least for Spencer, I'm aware of. I'm not quite sure if that's the same with you, Leo. But anyways, that was our first target date of March 18. So, in the absence of no further activity or action by the committee, I think we could be in a legal conundrum of how we go forward with a budget. So, I'm just saying, there could be a way of working this through. And if you did say, well, okay, we'll do that contingent upon an additional $55,000, that you can address anytime from now until when it goes to town meeting, or say that you need to meet again and direct administration to go back to see if we can pull a few dollars out of here, a full dollar, a few dollars out of there. Something's going to go. I'm guaranteeing you that. Something's going to go. But we would certainly be judicious in what we're doing, and something else is going to be lost. But I'm just trying to strike a compromise here.
Thank you, Dr. Malvi. My sense is that you came forward with a budget, and this board participated in the process where we asked you to go back and reconsider and to make recommendations to us. And we chose to do it that way because we wanted your professional educational experience to come back and make these recommendations to us. And to your credit, you've done it. You've made it very clear how painful this is for you to do. I can't help but think, if there was some other way of doing it, you certainly would have done that. I don't think you would be cutting that position. I have all the confidence that as we go forward, if changes are made and money becomes available, I suspect that will be the very first thing that you would be applying funds to. And you've indicated that that is the case. And I think that that's the route that we need to go. And we need to get the figure down to the town. We have people leaving on this board, several different people, that are going to be gone for business. We're not having another meet. We ain't having another meeting next week or the following week because I'm not scheduling any meetings where all members of this board, when it comes to the budget, can't be present in order to vote. Everyone has given me their schedules, and that's been factored in. And that's why we're under the timeframe of trying to meet the requirements of the town and to get this done. So, I guess it comes down to a question of trust. Do we trust what we're hearing from the administration, that they've done what we've asked them to do? They've brought forward the best possible scenario they could to us. And they're telling us that as we go forward, if funds are made available, that's probably the first area that they're going to go into to replace any positions that have been cut. And so, based on that, the chair would ask again if there was a motion for the level services budget that was presented by the administration for $24,096,795.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Cludier. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. King. Any further discussion?
Just one thing. You know, that first line item right there on additions, you know, the principal, assistant principal, that, to me, is a mistake we made and we came clean on. And I would just hope we would do the same thing with that. So, there is one example. It's just on this page. And I know that there are a few examples. I think you're right. If we do find it, I think we would...
And I think that holds true. I think you make a good point. I think that also holds true with workbooks and the library and all the rest of it. These are things that boards were forced to do because of the position they were in. But fortunately, through the work of the administration, we're slowly being able to get back to these and stuff. And I do think that it will continue in the future, and I think we've had the insurances that it would, you know?
What about making it airtight, then? We did the reverse. We said, we keep it in, you know, contingent upon finding the money. All right, well, we take it out. But it's the first thing that's brought back. We put that in the motion.
I would have no objection to that.
If it goes now, that's the first thing, if we put every dollar we have into bringing it back.
What's the feeling of board members? Anyone have any comments in regards? Josh is suggesting that if there's support to go forward with this number, that as the administration goes forward, go forward working with the communities, if there's monies that are found to increase the budget, that that position be marked as the first area that funds would be applied to. Does anyone have any concerns or any comments in regards to that?
Well, I guess just not knowing what position we'll be in then, that's a tough one to do. I mean, I would obviously respect the administration's decision. We got it, and there's no other problems, and he thinks we can put it back. I'm for it.
I guess that, you bring up another good point, Chris, and that was my position with this. There's not, the recommendations back from the superintendent didn't include items that I want. But I made the decision, when I voted to send these things to a recommendation to the superintendent, that I was going to accept what his recommendation was going to be when it came back. The alternative to that would be for the board to exercise, flex their muscle, and use their vote. And you can certainly pass this, and members can come back with a motion and a directive to the superintendent to cut something out of the budget, just simply by not funding it. And my concern was, I thought that was the wrong way to go. I thought that that was unfair to the superintendent. It was unfair to the administration, that we were better off to put the cards on the table, make our suggestions of what we thought, and let the superintendent and his staff go back, take another look at what we're asking for, and then come back with their recommendation, which is exactly what happened. And I'm accepting this with things that I thought should be in there. But as I said earlier, we're all not going to get everything that we want. It's unfortunate, but we're still at that part. It's unfortunate, but we're still at that part in time, that place in time. So, having said that, does anybody have any concerns with that, or any comments in regards to that?
I think putting that in there, having that be the first thing that's brought back is the compromise that gets us through this, because we can't leave here tonight until we vote on this.
Okay. Mrs. Gershman?
I just have a concern, and it goes back to, once something is taken out of the budget, it's gone. The assistant principal position, it's been gone. It was brought back for a year, and it's a whole year that the position has not been there. You take a teacher out of the budget, it never gets put back in, and if it's going to be a year, how are we helping our students, especially in a grade that is MCAS? It's not beneficial to risk losing a year of losing a teacher in this district.
Any other comments?
Well, she does bring up a good point. That is MCAS, and that is a level-three school.
Any other comments from Mr. Nordquist?
What's the, what's the figure now on?
It's the original figure of the level service budget recommended, had $24,096,795. And what's being suggested by Mr. Cludier is a negotiating point that might get that number passed would be if there was support from the board, that the administration would earmark that position to take priority, I guess would be the word over any positions.
So, that's the new motion?
Well, he suggested, there's been no formal motion made to it, but.
No formal motion. But then, yes, we have that.
Yeah, there's a motion under $24,096. There's no motion on his.
Then I'd like to make a motion to amend it.
Okay. On a vote to amend the motion of $24,096,795, to direct the superintendent administration that if funds were to become available as we go forward through the budget process, the priority would be given to that teaching position that was cut. Is there a second to the amendment? Hearing no second to the amendment, we'll take a vote on the original motion, which is to move for $24,096,795. That has been seconded, Martha? Okay, that has been seconded. Again, on a roll call vote, Mrs. Gershman?
No.
Mr. Cludier?
Yes.
Mr. Cludier?
No.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Nordquist?
Yes.
Ms. Messia?
No.
Chair votes yes. We're not going to waste any more time on this. We'll continue to go forward. We'll start making the arrangements for a district meeting, not having a budget probably completed, and be back to December trying to get this mess straightened out. We're not going to make much progress, folks, but that's the vote of the board, and it'll stand accordingly. Next item on the agenda, school committee calendar. The administration has included in your packet a calendar for the upcoming year. If there's any comments, questions, suggestions, I'd like to hear them. Mr. Nordquist?
Mr. Chairman, on the bottom, it says, "Last day of school, June 11th, if no snow days are used." Is there any snow days left every speak?
That's the next year.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
Any other questions in regards to the schedule? If not, this requires a vote. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the school calendar of two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cludier. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Under new business.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just as a polite courtesy for the question, we're still one day in holding this year. Keep your fingers crossed that the snow stays away, stay up in the ski country. We've had four snow days and one holding.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent. The next item is high school overnight trip request. We have two from the high school. Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two trips taking place during April vacation, one of which is show choir, going to New York City to see Mamma Mia. There's a bus trip down there. It's out-of-state travel. That requires a vote by the school committee to offset the price. They did some fundraising activities. Again, live theater goes with the Common Core curriculum, enriches students' lives, and I would respectfully ask that the school committee accepts the request for overnight out-of-state travel to New York City.
Any questions for Mr. O'Brien from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nordquist?
As I have asked in the past on one and two, are these fully funded by support of the fundraisers?
There is no school cost involved. Either students pay through fundraisers or through fundraises on their own.
That was my question. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Nordquist.
Okay. Any other questions in regards to that trip? If not, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Nordquist, a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gershman. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next trip, Mr.
The next trip was first brought to the committee's attention several years back when we were in the planning stages. Now, we have approximately a half dozen students and chaperones traveling to London and Paris. I've been on this trip myself before. It's a chance of a lifetime for the students that are going, and that also takes place over April vacation, and it's through EF Tours, the world leader in student tour. Great opportunity, again, for the children, and I appreciate Mrs. Maringer giving up her April vacation to, and she's the foreign language advisor, giving up her April vacation to take students overseas.
Okay. Any questions from the board in regards to that trip? If not, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mrs. Gershman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cludier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so voted. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on, non-discrimination statement change. Dr. Malvey?
Did, I'm sorry, did that end up on, or do they have to add it? You put it on?
Go together, y'all. We have a problem.
On the correct, okay, good, good. Well, this is a requirement that the State Department of Education has notified us as other districts, and the only adjustment is to add the word gender identity to our existing non-discrimination statement, so it's.
This is requiring a vote?
Required.
Okay. Any questions in regards to that change by any members? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Cludier, seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. King. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next item on the agenda is personnel information in your packet. You have a list of personnel changes. Anyone have any questions in regards to those? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
We have.
Okay, all right, just information. All right, next is enrollment. That's in your packet, another informational piece. Any questions for the administration in regards to that from anyone? Okay, moving on, school newsletters. You have newsletters in your packet from the various schools. Anybody have any comments? Mr. Nordquist?
Chairman, I just happened to see, maybe it was a mistake. I didn't see a report from East Brookfield, forgotten or wasn't done on time. Mr. Tomlin?
Mr. Tomlin?
Thanks for going to the mic.
It's no mistake. We have a set schedule. We put out beginning of the year every four weeks, and because you guys moved your meeting up a week, I was not going to require my teachers to do it ahead of time because they're very busy, okay? But it will be in next week as scheduled. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Next item is hearing for visitors. Is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard? Yes, Paul, come to the mic and give your name and address, please.
Paul Fornier, 76 Paxton Road. One, well, actually, a couple of things. The $55,000 isn't that big of a deal. It's not going to pass one way or the other, because neither town has any faith in anything that goes on in this district. Put it back in, who really cares? Number two, Mr. Cludier, I take an exception with every time you bring up school committee stuff, you look at me and other people on this board that didn't do their job, supposedly. I've got two kids in the district. If you think I sat there and did nothing, you're absolutely wrong. I visited the schools. I went in the schools. I sat with the teachers. I sat with the administrators, two years, to find out what was wrong with this district. And you know what? It was a house of cards, falling before it fell two years ago. I have two words, forensic audit, and that's it. That's the only way that you're going to get the respect of either one of these towns to approve anything that is going to go back into this district. Forensic audit.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else that, yes?
Louise Meyer-Durk, 36 Donnelly Crossroad. Mr. Hayes, I'm not here to criticize. I commend you. I realize the importance, the time that you guys have put into it. My mother was on the school committee for over 25 years. It takes away from your families, and I appreciate you. Mr. Cludier, I don't know what to say to you. I am a taxpayer in both towns. You talk about equality. I think it's time that maybe Spencer gets on board with the taxes. My tax rate in East Brookfield is a hell of a lot more than what I'm paying in Spencer.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Mr. James?
Mark James, Flag Road, Spencer, East Brookfield, excuse me.
Both towns.
As usually, I introduce myself in a much different way, but I would like the board, for at least tonight, to consider me a citizen, a taxpayer, a teacher in the school district. And I also want you to consider that I spent six years on a school committee, okay? I would urge you tonight, do not leave this table until you vote a budget number. I would strongly suggest that you vote the higher number of the $55,000 extra. You're voting on a number. That's what school districts, school district committees are due every year. They vote on a number. They don't vote on a position. They don't vote on what kind of materials go in or out. Those are left up to the superintendent and the experts in education. You are charged with voting a number, and the number you should go in with should be the higher number, because by statute, you can't raise that assessment number. Once you vote the number, you can't raise it. You can only reduce the assessment. Now, the $55,000, that's not, that's not something to get stuck on tonight. This process is, this is just step one in the process. Vote the higher number. There are going to be adjustments. We don't know how that's going to shake out. You don't know what the state's going to come in with. This is a very fluid thing. Vote the higher number, because you can't raise your budget assessment. You can only lower it. So, I urge you tonight, don't leave the table without a number. Vote the higher number, and let's move the process forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard?
Down front?
John?
John Damaris, 195 Main Street, also a member of the Finance Committee, and Spencer. This is the first time I've really sat and listened to a school committee doing this. If you take and sit back here and you listen to what you're doing up here, the last time I remember seeing something like that was back when I was in kindergarten. We're talking about $55,000, and you're refusing to make a decision on a budget because $55,000 stands in the way. That is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard in my life. There is a way, you're arguing on one hand, I don't want the $55,000 in there. On the other hand, I want the $55,000 in there. If you think that the state is going to come around and give money to you that's going to take care of that $55,000, which I think they will, if you were talking $200,000, $300,000, that would be different. You're talking about one teacher's job. You're talking about children sitting in a classroom to be without that teacher they've been with. You're putting yourselves and the way you're feeling ahead of the children. That's ridiculous.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard? Mr. Serba?
Mr. Cote, I take umbrage to that remark about my personality. I think I have a sparkling personality, but that's beside the point. Mr. Cludier, thank you for reading the blog. Who knew? You were watching our Facebook site on the other side. I'm happy, and you're probably watching the show, so I applaud that. Thank you. I think we have a good show. Just a couple quick comments. Mr. Cludier, and I don't have a great history, Mr. Cludier and his staff, the selectmen in 2006 tried to shut down the business owners by not.
Excuse me, Mr. Serba, I'll give you all the time to speak, but this is a school committee meeting, and adhere to the information.
Chairman? I watched, adhere to what? I listened to Mr. Cludier trash me up here? I mean, I'll keep it, I'll keep it civil, but that's got to work two ways, Mr. Chairman.
It will, but I'll say it as nicely as I can.
All right, fine.
If you want to continue to speak.
All right.
You're going to adhere to the issue of the budget.
Fine. All right, let's adhere to it.
We're not going down memory lane.
All right. Well, Mr. Cludier did mention, and this was brought up during the course of his conversation, that we just throw stuff at the wall, or particularly, I throw stuff at the wall until it sticks. Yeah, we throw things like professional development, or a lack of in this district, the bullying that's going on by this board, the budget that, when you guys got on this board, it was going to be, "We're going to go over every single line item on this budget till it's done." You guys have had these numbers since December 1st and done nothing with it, and now we're going to bum rush it, and now the seven of you are going to sit up here and lockstep, you're going to vote lockstep as a block. You, Mr. Nordquist, Mr. Cludier, are going to vote it one way, and you're not going to vote for anything for a teacher. And they're right. Put the $54,000 on there, send it down the hill, let it go before the town. When the town votes on it, if you lose it, at least you took the best shot. But unfortunately, this council does not seem to be about the kids at all, not even remotely. The budget reflects that, the lack of professional development. We're asking our teachers to do a job, and we give them an hour and a half of professional development. We have one administrator wearing four hats, and you can't tell me that this is working. We keep doing the same thing over and over and over. I remember sitting at these meetings in January, watching at Proudy. You and Mr. Cludier trashing some of the people on the school committee, and now you're sitting up there saying, "I can't believe people are so tough on me." It's like you can't have it both ways. It's like you can't have it both ways. And, Mr. Cludier, I'm glad, I'm really glad you feel the need to go out and trash my reputation, as you have many times, but the biggest thing you can hang on me is I was on the committee for a year. Yeah, you're right, Vinnie, I got off. I got off after a year because I was getting sued by the union, and I didn't wanna drag the town through that, or my family. As you'll soon find out, because if you remember, garbage in, garbage out, one of those comments you made to Mr. Rio when he asked about a million dollars being missing in the budget? You might recall that, or, put all your garbage on our table and bring it on. How's that working out for you now, Mr. Cludier? You're irresponsible, you shoot off, you shoot off your mouth at the wrong time. You know, you've sit up here and, oh, I haven't said anything. Well, I hope, I apologize to all you folks for ruining your school district. If by putting the truth on our site bothers you folks so much, I give you the opportunity, Mr. Cludier, anytime you want to come in. We're doing a show on the 20th, and we're doing a show on April 3rd. I would be happy to give you a half hour to come in and debate the facts. Mr. Hayes, same thing, or anybody on this board. Dr. Malvi, don't expect to see you on there, but you're more than welcome to come on.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, Paul. Anyone else like to be heard? Mr. Nordquist?
Chairman, I wanna speak as a, as a citizen. That's why I stepped off the table. I just wanna say, some comments were made. The town of Spencer pays 85% of the bill, and East Brookfield pays 15. That's a fact. And, and, excuse me, and then if $55,000 goes, it was said by administration, and if he can find the money, he'll put it in. And that's the way we have to go. We can't work on dreams and thoughts. We tried this twice tonight, it didn't go, it's not gonna go if you sit here for another four hours. It's not gonna go. Let him go back and see, if he can find it, I'm sure he will, I'm sure they'll all work on this, but we're just gonna sit here and spin our wheels. So, that's what, that's what I'm saying as an individual. There's a lot of facts being said tonight, there's a lot of facts that are not being said. And this is why we're in the predicament where we are. Say what you want. That's the fact.
Anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Mary, are you coming down? Okay. Take your time.
I guess, from an organizational perspective, echoing what Mr. James said, you can always, the actual motion at town meeting can be whatever number less than you voted tonight, so that you can put in the $55,000 tonight. I've heard many times, someone will make a motion on this board, and another person will second it for purposes of discussion. Perhaps that's the way we need to consider the number that you're going to send down tonight. I know that it is, none of the numbers are good in terms of numbers, not in terms of what they're paying for, for either town. But if it makes the process move, then perhaps sending the higher number down will at least give everybody something to work with.
Thank you, Mary. Is there someone else? Yes.
I'm a bit, Kyle Sullivan again, 17 Greenville Street. I'm just a bit disappointed with what I'm seeing here. I was at a meeting, I try to attend as many meetings as I can, and of course, we're all busy, especially these days as parents, we're in a million directions. But I look at effort, and the effort in two particular ways. First off, me coming here, me trying to stay informed with what's going on, and try to fight for our kids with these other parents, and very few of us, by the way, it's disappointing. But I think for the most part, people lose faith in the system, and you do have a credibility issue. But as a school committee, I'm expecting that you're taking the effort to give our kids the best possible shot. And as parents, we don't have a lot of time. I mean, as each year ticks by, this is a, this is a bad experience our kids are getting. So I'm in a crossroads right now because I need to decide whether to give you folks any more of my effort to pay attention to any of this nonsense. And by the way, you know, the meeting I was at during the mess, I heard some business about that we were using broad strokes, but when someone brings up details, all of a sudden, there's no effort on your side to actually go ahead and help us understand those details. So why the pushback? Why all this effort from you, pushing back when somebody asks a question? I'm offended by it. And as a parent, I have the decision now of what I need to do with my four children. I will pay for private schools if I have to. I don't want to. I wanna try to help the town here, and both by, by having, you know, my children, which I think are talented and have so much potential. I mean, my daughter right now is in Hyannis with the high school students. As of February, she was Panther of the Month. Do you want me to pull her out? So, you need to help us. I'm expecting the school committee that this budget you delivered is your, is my kid's best shot at doing, at the best, at the best education they can get. And I know we have a long way to go, and we have to moderate it, and we have our challenges. But I'm just, I'm just disappointed because I'm not hearing the best effort from this committee. I'm seeing number, and it doesn't mean that the budget needs to be too high. And by the way, I'm expecting also some creative solutions from the teachers' union, and I'm not hearing anything there. So, I'm not, I'm just not seeing the effort on numerous people's parts, and I'm disappointed.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard from the public? Last chance. Okay, comments from school committee members? Any school committee members? Mr. Cody?
As I said before, I don't think we can leave tonight without having this budget done, so I actually don't think we can. We need to do this tonight, don't we, Julie?
I have to send something down by the 18th.
Okay. That being said, I'd like to open this back up and discuss this more. I just don't think it's, we should leave. Six months ago, we were gonna sit here and have a meeting every day and stay there until midnight if we had to, to get the FY14 done, so let's...
I'm on board, Mr. Cody. I'll drive you home. No problem.
All right.
So, is there a motion with the level service budget as recommended by the superintendent? And just in comment to some of the folks that have come up to the mic, I've sat here for the last few years at home watching what's going on, and I've watched this district be run by amateurs in the superintendent's office. We finally got a superintendent that came in as an intern. We have a budget that came before this board, and every single member of this board participated in suggestions and recommendations as to what they wanted done and what they wanted added in. The administration has come back and has put probably 98% of the recommendations that this board has made into the budget. For those that say, once a teacher's taken out, they never come back, your case is disproven with what's happening tonight with the recommendation from the superintendent. He has come forward and recommended to put the vice principal back at Wire Village. I was not in support of that. Dr. Malvi can tell you, I went and visited him. I told him I wasn't in support of this. He convinced me why I should be in support of it, and I support it tonight. I can't get everything I want in the budget, but what's frustrating to me is, I'm not looking for amateurs to make us the recommendations to what's gonna happen. We gave it to the superintendent, he considered it, he's made it clear. It's the hardest decision he's had to make as an educator of 40 years. It's before us. Stop asking me the question about why we don't wanna change. We're accepting what the administration has put on the table to us, and it's the best that they've seen around here in the last three or four years, as far as putting things back on the table for the kids. So in light of that, we'll go back to the level service budget that was presented by the administration for $24,096,795. Is there a motion for that?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Nordquist. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cludier, and now discussion.
Well, first, I'd like to ask the superintendent, do you think, is it, is it wiser to add the $55,000 back in, or is it not necessary? What is your opinion? Then I'd like Julie to answer the same thing.
Okay, we'll go, Dr. Malvi.
As I understand the question, is it wiser to put...
Should we have it in, or shouldn't we have it in?
Well, I'll go back to what I've originally said right along, that, that I am struggling with what I had to come forward with a recommendation. So as an educator, my preference would be to have it in. I was trying to find some middle ground here, so that still is the same. I was trying to find some middle ground here to say that you could go forward with a couple different options and still have another bite at the apple going down the road, and I think that's what Mary was alluding to as well. You can't amend up, you can amend down. So I'm still of that opinion, that if there's a way out of this, I think that would be the way to go.
So if there's a way out of this, you would put the $55,000 back in?
Put it in. Because if we can't meet it, if, if we can't meet it, it'll probably be the first thing to go. And what you folks were asking for, could that be the first thing back in? Right now, it's on a seesaw. And who knows? The picture can change in another couple of months. Something happened on the state's side, something else happened on our end, because we're still reviewing both retirements and insurance, something could happen, and then, you know, we're, we're moving forward, hand in hand.
All right.
You want to, Julie?
Yeah, I'd like to hear what you think.
Julie, would you respond, please?
I guess if you wanna guarantee that you're gonna get it, you should probably put it in. I mean, we are waiting on a lot of renewals and other things that we will find out about over the next few months, but they could go the other way. So if you wanna guarantee you're gonna have it, then your probably safest bet is definitely to put it in.
Now, one last thing, and then I'll shut up. I agree with some of what you're saying, Mr. Hayes. We are a bunch of amateurs up here doing this. We're not professional educators, and we're arguing over $55,000. But the reason that I think a few of us have dug our heels in is because that $55,000 represents a teacher, and the difference between 14 and 28 kids in a classroom in the third grade, which is a year that they take the MCAS, in a level three school, after we just got the DSAC report, which wasn't flattering for the district. So it might seem like $55,000, and we may seem like a petty bunch of people, but that's the reason we've dug our heels in here. And now, having heard from the superintendent that he would leave it in, and from the business manager that she would leave it in, I really hope you guys would, would jump on board with this and just leave it in. Well, like they said, we can, we can go down, we can't go up. Please, vote for this. Vote for this $55,000.
Any other comments by any members? Hearing none? On a roll call vote, Mrs. Gershman?
Can I just get a clarification?
Yes.
This is level funded without the $55,000 on this vote? No.
Mr. Cludier?
Yes.
Mr. Cody?
No.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Nordquist?
Aye.
Ms. Messia?
No.
Chair votes aye. Sir, another motion?
Make a motion to approve the, and I don't have the number right in front of me.
24, 157.
24, 157.
I want 151.
Okay. 24, 151, 795 budget.
Motion made by Mr. Cody for $24,000,151,795. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Sikes by Ms. Gershman. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cludier?
I would like, Mr. Kotay, to explain to me what the difference is between educating a class of 28 in the town of East Brookfield, or five classes of 26 in the town of Spencer? Because that was your point that you just made.
Well, that was, that was one of the points.
So I'd like you to just explain to me what the difference is.
The point that I was making about the one teacher versus the five teachers is, the five teachers actually can work together, plan, spend time together, it's called common planning. I care about it all the time from my wife, and how important it is. So they actually have other teachers to talk to and do things with, and communicate with other professionals. Though where you have one teacher, they're kinda locked away in solitary confinement. That was the best way a teacher put it for me, was that they're just, they're tucked away, and there's, there's no other interaction. That was the point I was getting to with that. Now, the point I was getting to with the 14 or the 28 was exactly what I said. It's 14 students or it's 28 students. It sucks that Spencer is at 26. It really does.
But it's okay.
No, it's not!
No one's saying it's okay.
Let's get crazy. Let's start adding more teachers back in.
No one is saying that's okay.
Nobody is saying that's okay.
We're gonna have, excuse me, we're gonna have one member at a time, the person that has the floor do the speaking, and then, I'll give the floor back to you, Josh, but I'm gonna ask members to let whoever speak finish, and then you'll be recognized through the chair. I'll give everybody an opportunity. Go ahead, Josh.
Look, I'm not saying it's okay. I wanna bring more teachers back, and I agree with you on the fact that I don't think there's been a lot of support for education. I'm disappointed in what happened last year. But we gotta draw the line somewhere. One. Two, the professional, the guy that's not an amateur, just sat here and said, he thinks putting the $55,000 in isn't a bad idea. In fact, it's a, it's a, it's a good idea, because there's a good chance we're not gonna get another crack at this. They can change it at town meeting, we can change it anytime. Why are you guys digging your heels in over this $55,000? Just, just put it back in. Let, let's, if it gets reduced, it gets reduced. We'll put, we'll put an amendment on it, that that's the first thing to go, but keep it in there for now.
Um, Cludier?
I'm done.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I'll agree with Mr. Kotay. Put it back in, and if the budget doesn't approve, it does not get approved for the amount of 24,096, whatever, eight, whatever it is.
24, 151.
24, 151, 795?
If it doesn't get approved for that, it comes out. Because, actually, contrary to what's been said up here, as you all know, the budget is our authority. And, and somebody got to the mic, and I don't remember who it was, and said that, you know, we just vote a lump sum, we don't vote line items. Well, whoever said that is completely incorrect, could be further from the truth. This is our one shot and our responsibility, our fiduciary responsibility, to approve this budget. We're not just approving that number, we're approving the budget, line item by line item. And if the transfers need to be made, they have to request those transfers from us, just like we approved them tonight, or they're not made. So it is our response, it's our one chance at this. So, I'll agree to that. If the budget doesn't get approved for it, it gets removed.
We have to do that in an amendment?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the superintendent. Dr. Malvi, are you on board with that?
That would be acceptable.
Okay. I'll agree to that. There's the fifth vote.
Okay, so we have a motion for $24,000,151,795 by Mr. Cody?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion? Oh, there already was a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I think we would have to amend it now.
Okay.
From Mr. Cludier's condition.
Mr. Cludier's amendment?
Can I just speak on one thing? Mr. Cludier, again, with all due respect, you questioned what's the difference between Spencer and East Brookfield. I agree with you. We should have equality again throughout the district. It's wrong to have class sizes of 28 students in any classroom in this district. Wire Village has Title I. Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe with Title I, they get into smaller class, class groupings. East Brookfield does not qualify for, for, it's not true? All right, but there is benefits to having Title I in a school, that East Brookfield does not have those benefits. Thank you for clarifying that. That's all, that's the only thing I wanted to direct.
Okay. Um, Cludier?
Mr. Chairman, through you, really not necessarily in response, but, but I was a proponent, if you recall, throughout the entire process last year for the higher budgets. I didn't just say it at these meetings. I spoke at town hall meetings, I spoke at the override meetings, I was a proponent for the extra money. We didn't get the extra money. You know, as far as, you know, the tax rate being, you know, too low in the town of Spencer, that was another issue that was brought up. That's not something that this board has any control over. We send a budget downtown, and it's totally up to the fathers downtown on what they wanna do with the taxes, and, and what they wanna place on overrides, and how they wanna present it to the voters. You know, our responsibility is to come up with a budget. And, and quite frankly, I did, you know, I did not speak with the superintendent. My comments were made at the last meeting, I certainly hadn't spoken to him since then, and, and this is the budget that he came in recommending. But I will move with this, and I will go along with this, but if that budget isn't approved, I think we have to have some equality somewhere, and I think it's important. That's, that's, that's the reason. It's not to try to cut another teacher. If I had my brothers, I'd be adding teachers. But that didn't work last year, so...
Okay, so we, we have Mr. Cludier's motion, that if this number doesn't pass, that it will be cut out of the budget. Is there any further conversation on that amendment?
Amended.
Does this still have a motion and a second on the...
If I can speak to that?
Go ahead.
You have the motion and the second on the amount of the 24, 151, 795, and then Mr. Cludier raised the issue, if, if it doesn't pass muster, then the $55,000 could be the first thing to go. I would simply say that is, so that would be the amendment to it, if that's correct, Vinnie.
That is correct.
And then if the motioner agrees, and the person that second agreed, then Martha can make that adjustment, rather than have a separate vote and motion, and then when you vote, you're voting on the amended motion on the 24, 151, 795.
Okay, so what... Okay, so we'll take a roll call vote on the amended motion.
Well, I'm saying if, if...
Ask Josh if it's okay.
If it's okay with the motioner to include that, and the seconder.
Yep.
Yes.
Everyone's on board with that?
Now, you're voting on the amended motion, which includes Vinnie's piece and the amount that Josh put forward.
Okay, ready for a roll call vote? Mrs. Gershman?
Aye.
Mr. Cludier?
Aye.
Mr. Cote?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Nordquist?
No.
Messia?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. All right, are there any other comments?